Welcome. I call this September 9, 2025 meeting of Council to order at 5:00 p.m. This meeting will be held in a hybrid manner where members of council staff and the public can participate electronically. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded and will be available on the township website. Notices hereby provided that under the authority of the Municipal Act 2001 and in accordance with Municipal Freedom of Information and Privacy Protection of Privacy Act that all information obtained is considered part of the public record. All rules apply to the meeting as if everyone was attending in person and if there is a problem with the technology impacting the proceedings of the meeting, the meeting may be recessed. But this time I would ask anyone that can to rise for the playing of the national anthem. We acknowledge that we are being hosted on the ancestral lands of the Hodor-Nashani, Mississauga and Omamaweninii people. We acknowledge and welcome the presence of all the indigenous peoples including the Métis, Inuit and other First Nations from across this vast land who also makes this place home. The lands we are on today are recognized in the Two Row Wampanish with One Spoon Treaty, Treaty 27 and the Crawford Purchase. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the confirmation of the agenda. Do I have a mover? Deputy Mayor Townend? So moved. Seconded by Councillor Ennis. All in favor? Motion is passed. And are there any declarations of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof for open session? Councillor Pradrick?
I made a declaration on item 11-2 or 11-1, I'm drawing a blank.
11-1, naming rights?
Yes, because I'm in one of the reports and I'm a minority owner of one of the businesses.
Okay, thank you. Any other declarations this evening for open? Seeing none, we have a motion to go into closed session. Would someone like to present that motion? Councillor Pradrick? Can you just use your link?
Not having a good start here. I would move that we go into closed session.
Can you read the rest?
You can't. Of course I don't have it in front of me. Uh, there we are. Moving to closed session to consider a position plan, procedure, criteria, instruction to be applied to negotiations of ferry operations, negotiations pursuant to section 239, 2K of the Miss Black.
So moved. Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Willis? All in favor? Motion is passed.
Welcome back everyone. Just for everyone's information, we did have a closed session. We started an hour ago and council went into closed session. And now we're just back reconvening the open session portion of the meeting. So we will reconvene with the open and as usual, the first item back after closed is a rise and report. I will turn it over to the deputy town in very shortly, but first I just wanted to publicly announce in open that I did declare a conflict of interest, community interest with the item enclosed due to the fact that the negotiations are with my employer. So at that, with that, I will turn it over to the deputy so he can do the rise and report.
Through your worship, I can report that council met in closed session and provided instruction to staff with respect to ongoing operational negotiations concerning the Amherst Island Ferry Service.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item up is the introduction of new township staff. Turn it over to the CIO.
Thank you. We've asked before that we do this twice a year where any new staff that have joined the corporation are introduced formally at council and we have three members here, I believe today to be recognized. First, we have Chris Beeg, who's a new permanent full-time building inspector in our building services department, development services department. He joins us with six years of building inspector experience from the township of South Fronak as well as 14 years in private carpentry and residential construction. He's joined us since June 2nd, so Chris. Welcome. My other question is this Raphael? Okay, great, just want to make sure. We're also pleased to announce that Raphael Campos is returning to Loyalist Township as a permanent full-time engineering technician. He is previously, it was in an intern position, so we're happy to have him back. He brings with him seven years of experience as a civil engineering technologist with expertise in civil design and drafting, site inspections, land development agreements and site plan subdivisions and servicing reports. He holds a civil engineering technologist diploma from St. Lawrence College and international degrees in industrial and environmental engineering. So we're very happy to have him join our engineering services team. Thank you. And welcome. And finally, we're pleased that Matthew Sobolski is here, who joined us on July 14th as the manager of parks and facilities. Matthew has many years of municipal leadership experience, including oversight of, which is very handy right now, I believe, oversight of a new pool and aquatic center at the CarMax Recreation Complex. So I know Matthew is making use of that these days as we get very close to reopening the WJ Henderson Community Center. Matthew started his career at the city of Ottawa, sorry, it's not working tonight, city of Ottawa, after graduating from a Gonquin College in Recreation and Leisure Services. And he moved to Director of Recreation roles in the Hamlet of, in the Northwest Territories in the village of Carmax in Yukon. So comes to us from a long way away. He was the CIO at the village of Carmax, so we're happy to have him here in a leadership role in our Recreation Parks and Celeste Division. Welcome Matthew. Thank you, council. Those are three of our new staff. We have quite a few others who have joined us over the last six months, but then you do get announced. We do announce those to all people, but we'd like to recognize them formally here. Thank you.
So welcome to Loyalist Township and we're pleased to have you here and the level of expertise that has come through Loyalist with the new employees is pretty outstanding. So welcome, I hope you enjoy yourself and you. You got something on this one?
Go ahead. Yes, sorry, there's one more new staff here. So Michael is a new environmental technician with the engineering group. So he's here on a contract position for the next year with us.
Tomorrow, we have someone else, sorry, it wasn't on the sheet, so apologies, council. We also have Bob Woodman here. Captain Bob Woodman is our new marine services supervisor. He actually started last year in a role as relief captain with the Amherst Island Ferry Service. He brings a wealth of experience here in the maritime operations and he's done a lot for us in the last few months with lots of experience in his past 33 years in the marine sector. And so we're happy to have Captain Bob Woodman here as well. Thank you.
Well, that's good. We had a couple more that we were able to recognize as well. So welcome everyone. It's great that we're pleased that you're with Loyalist and we hope you enjoy your time here and look forward to working with you going forward. So as usual, you're more than welcome to stay for the council meeting. It's very riveting, I know. If, if you so choose to vacate the room, feel free. We know that you have, there's other things on a nice sunny evening that probably a lot of you are interested into. Thank you and welcome. And the next item, Inspector Tovell and Staff Sergeant O'Brien. If you would like to come forward, you just push the button so the light comes on on the speaker here and you can provide your presentation for us. And we do all have a copy of it on the agenda, so we have it already.
Good evening, your worship. Councillors, thank you very much for having us here. It's always a privilege to come to Loyalist and this council meeting. Last time we were here, we recognized the fine work that our auxiliary program had done and you're gracious enough to acknowledge that work with them in the chamber here. So thank you. I have with me Staff Sergeant Al Laburn. So Al is in charge of our operations. We have two staff sergeants at Lennox Natix and OPP. One does the support side, which is your courts and a lot of the human resource civilian side. And then there's the operation side will oversees our crime, our community street crimes unit and the frontline officers. And so that's Al's responsibility. So I always bring him along because a lot of the questions that we find come in the way of traffic or things going on in the community. So Al's pretty much the one that coordinates and gets our troops out in the community responding to all that. So any questions at the end of this? So any questions at the end of this report, we're more than happy to entertain. And again, we don't have too many opportunities to be before council here. So welcome anything and we'll probably provide you any updates with regards to what we're doing, the great work we're doing here in the community. So primarily this, I'm going to take the opportunity to speak to the 2024 Detachment Annual Report, which I believe everyone has a copy of. Just a little prelude, so the 2024, we're already into September of 2025. But the new CSPA had guidelines and stuff for detachment boards, OPP detachment boards to roll out the 2024 annual report. And things were a little bit delayed because of the new process. And we didn't get final approval, approval from municipal policing bureau within the OPP until the end of June. So with that approval, then we were able to share it with our detachment board. And from there, then we've been invited to the various communities to to kind of answer any questions and provide some, some high level highlights from that report. So just on the, to speak quickly about our detachment board, so it's been up and running for about a year now. We've had a few meetings. It's chaired by Greater Napanee Councilor Bob Norrie. And we have representatives from all of our communities. I'm very, very pleased with the relationship that we've established within the board already. So great communication and a lot of great stuff ahead. Chairman Norrie and I attended Ontario Association of Police Service Board meeting in London a couple of months ago together. And we're able to talk about a lot of, you know, policing issues and community safety issues that we share and the work that we're looking forward to doing in the coming year. So things are working really well there. Within Lennox-Nattington, we, the, the end game is to have two boards. So we have the one up and running now, which is the board that represents this community. But the Tynanega Desert Ronto communities will be, are in the works of creating another board. So as your detachment commander, I'll be responsible to the, to the two boards. So this 2024 annual report highlights our crime roadway, waterway and trail safety and our community wellbeing data and highlights successes from the past year. This 2024 report also is a midway report for the Lennox-Nattington OPP 2023 to 2025 action plan and provides updates on our current progress and our action plan commitments. So at the end of 2025, we will be going into our next action report. And what's going to be exciting about this one is this time with having our detachment board in place, we're going to be working with the board who represents our communities to understand what our priorities are in each of the communities. And that will form our action plan for our officers and moving forward over the next few years. And through meetings like this and working with the detachment board, we'll be able to, you know, have those little milestone markers throughout that term to evaluate how we're doing and, you know, pivot as needed to ensure we're meeting the needs of our community. This report is really broken into the three areas, as I said. The crime area during the 2023 to 25 action plan period, our detachment, Lennox-Nattick OPP, have increased our capacity for investigative excellence in a number of ways. Training has been key for us in training our people. Our detachment frontline in particular is made up of a lot of new young officers. Probably most of our shifts have less than four years policing experience and probably 80% of that is less than three years. We have officers who have been on a year and a half coaching new recruits. And that's just the reality of policing across, I think, across the country. So it's not unique to the OPP. It's just a reality. And with that then comes a high demand for training. And so that's a big burden to put on our Ontario Police College and our provincial police academy out of OPP headquarters. So training has been key for our people to get them the, that knowledge that they need to be effective. Also enhancing our oversight of victim-based calls and increasing public awareness of technology-based crimes. Some, some specific initiatives that we've undertaken over the last couple of years in, in the way of training our people as we've provided new training assignment opportunities for our officers. We're focused on providing experiential learning for the management of more complex criminal cases. We've increased the number of officers trained in major case investigations, including human trafficking, intimate partner violence investigations and investigative interviewing techniques. In courses like the human trafficking investigations, these are new courses over the last few years. Again, it's a new concern in policing that we never really had to worry about a number of years ago, but it's just the reality of society now. And, you know, we've learned that human trafficking goes through all of our communities and often it's within all of our communities is important for our officers to, to understand and recognize those signs for those types of crimes. We've also trained our officers in the community, the new community safety outreach system, commonly referred to as the CCTV. So Greater Napanee area through grant funding and working with Lennox-Nattick OPP have enhanced their CCTV system in the downtown and the main intersection areas. It was a couple of years ago when I first started as a detachment commander, there were a few cameras in place and they were looking to tear down a building. So they, they called me just to give me a heads up that that infrastructure was going to be torn down. And we were able to stop that and actually take advantage of a grant, a substantial grant from the Ontario government and the CCTV network we now have in the Greater Napanee area has got AI technology. It's got a capacity for automated license plate recognition and those sorts of things. We've used it for locating missing persons, solving crimes. So for example, we had a missing person. We knew what the individual was wearing. We're able to just put that data into the, into the software and the computers search for individuals who match that description. We're able to identify the person and narrow down the area and search that, that particular section of the community and we locate her. So it's, it's great technology and so our officers use that a lot. We supported the new OPP Crime Prevention and Community Support Bureau. So this is a response to a culmination of several concurrent organizational initiatives within the OPP. Our detachment supports this bureau and its work through a new position at our detachment dedicated at supporting abuse investigations. This officer is known as our detachment abuse issues investigator and provides oversight in the highest level of support to victims of crimes. The nice thing about this is it's an enhancement to our detachment, but it's an enhancement to the OPP in that bureau. So it's not a cost to our municipality. It's again, it's one of those provincial pieces that the OPP brings along. So this officer is dedicated full-time to looking at all crimes where it's victim-based and reaching out and making sure that they understand the, the legal process as well that they have the supports that they need to help them through it. We've put more resources towards engaging with vulnerable community groups to educate individuals and organizations about several types of fraud, how they work and how to prevent them. We do a lot of this through our community engagement officer who, who sets up meetings with, we've gone to some seniors groups as well as our auxiliary. Done a lot of great work in our outreach to those vulnerable groups to speak about frauds and what to look out for. And finally, as far in, pardon me, finally in the way of investigative excellence, the OPP has invested heavily on our frontline mobile digital technology. Over the last year, year and a half, all of our cruisers now have in-car cameras. They have car cameras, not only recording next to you in the car, but we also have cameras inside the front seat, backseat for when we do have prisoners. All officers now have body worn cameras that are activated through self-activation or when we activate our emergency lights in the cruisers, not only do our in-car cameras come on, but our body worn cameras also. And all that video evidence is captured in the cloud base. Each cruiser has mobile workstations. Each officer has now been issued a mobile cellphone. And the purpose of the cellphone is all the video evidence that's coming from our in-car camera, body worn camera in taking audio statements. That's all tethered through the mobile phone and our officers do a lot of the work in uploading that through that device. All of our cruisers also have automated license plate recognition, which are cameras that capture vehicles moving, passing us, either coming towards us or from behind. And those cameras are capable of, of running a number of license plates per second and providing the officer in the cruiser with information for expired license plates, suspended drivers, wanted persons, any important information in that regards. And it's all captured and, and shared with the officer through an alert system in the cruiser. So and also the OPP has transitioned to a modern encrypted and innovative radio system. It's interministerial that will be utilized by eight Ontario ministries and more than 38,000 frontline emergency responders. It will allow for interoperability and all radios have GPS technology, improving the safety of our officers and the ability to respond to an officer in an emergency situation in an activation. And pardon me, within the report too, there's we have focused on engagement and education on our highways, trails, waterways, emphasizing the need for every operator, passenger and recreational user to be responsible for eliminating the risks and prevent serious injury or loss of life. We've engaged with community stakeholders, regional traffic teams to address a number of specific issues on our roads, waterways and trails. And during this action plan period, we've committed to a full-time marine program. We've done this for a few years now. And between May to September, the OPP has full-time operators on our waterways throughout Lennox-Nattington. In 2024, our operators alone engaged more than 1,300 operators on our waterways promoting recreational safety with a focus on preventing unnecessary injury or death. This is in addition to our provincial program, the SAVE team, which is snowmobile ATV vessel enforcement. It's based out of East Region Smith Falls area. But they also are on our waterways. So they support our work. Between our full-time program and the full-time SAVE, I could tell you that the Lennox-Nattington waterways in particular have a lot of presence with regards to OPP out there. Our officers remain steadfast in their commitment to keeping our roads safe. We're pretty proud to say that our impaired driving enforcement has increased 20% over where it was in 2023. Our speed enforcement's increased 32% over 2023. Our seatbelt enforcement has doubled since 2023 and our distracting driving enforcement has near tripled since 2023. Fatal motor vehicle collisions were reduced and I'm pleased to report that year to date, there have been no fatalities. Personal injury collisions and property damage collisions have reduced an additional 14% year to date right now from where they were in 2024 through the efforts of our officers. The OPP, the LNA OPP formed a traffic alliance also with our neighboring detachments to increase our visibility and capacity to effectively respond to road safety concerns. This is an enhancement to everyday proactive duties, increasing our visibility and community outreach opportunities. We're fortunate in this area to have Fronnak OPP, we have Prince Edward County OPP, Centre Hastings OPP, our provincial, provincial traffic team, part of the teams housed out of the Odessa office here and the other half is in Quinney West, as well as our own officers. And through this alliance, we have teams that are working and we, we share our resources, bring them together. So in addition to the officers who are normally working on the road, we have this collaborative effort on our highways also. And they'd be focused at things like our distracted driving and our, our seatbelt and impaired driving efforts. And we continue to work closely with our provincial support partners, East Region SAVE, East Region Traffic. In all things we do, we're very fortunate again in this area to have these teams always working in our areas. So they often assist us in backing up with calls, traffic complaints in our communities and that they're often present and able to support our officers when we're not readily available. Our community wellbeing through the 2023 to 25 action plan period, LNA OPP have focused on a sustained community engagement model, recognizing community engagement and collaboration as a cornerstone for success towards common approaches and best practices. We continue to expand capacity to meet the needs of our most vulnerable in our community through an integrated mobile crisis response team. And through provincial grant funding, this partnership has increased from our support with the MSERT workers from two to three. So the mobile crisis response team, these are social service workers who are embedded in our detachment. They have an office in our detachment and are strategically located near the back exit of our detachment. So when officers are on the road and need to come in and pick up an MSERT worker or they're leaving the detachment, they grab an MSERT worker and they attend calls. So and these are primarily mental health calls where people are, are in crises. So back in the day, not too long ago, where often police were called to these non-police really matters. These are vulnerable persons who require social services. You know, police were left to figure a way through it. But now with this MSERT program, these, these, these professionals work with their officers, attend calls and we're able to get those vulnerable, those people who are experiencing a crisis at the time, the support they need. And through our MSERT outreach, get them into the appropriate social services. So in 2024, MSERT received more than 4,000 service contacts, completed more than 1,200 follow-up interactions, supporting individuals and exchanged more than 2,500 calls or texts with members of our community who are in need. Also, the OPP auxiliary unit is a, is a great outreach for us and our establishing that trust in policing and that outreach. During the last year, our unit volunteered more than 3,000 hours attending 58 community events. This past year, we celebrated three members of our auxiliary who had surpassed a 2,500 volunteer hour mark in their auxiliary career, which was just outstanding. And each one of these three members, this is, this is really the volunteer retirement career. They've already put in a lengthy career in their personal life and here they are volunteering and they're a regular presence in our detachment. And the LNA OPP have worked closely with the municipality of Greater Napanee, Loyalist Township in just having a better understanding of what our community needs, where we can help, where we as police can have a greater presence. And we're proud actually that in a couple of weeks, we're bringing the OPP golden helmets to Loyalist to Bath. Our people have been working closely with, with the planners in Loyalist and it's going to be a great event. It's, we are the envy of a number of detachments in, in East, East Region here. I, I announced it on a, on a call with everybody that we were getting the golden helmets here. And I was met with a lot of questions as to how we did it and what did we do? And people have been putting in for this for years. So we're, we're very proud of this team. Having been a former manager in our provincial traffic operations, I know the work that goes into these select few individuals who are riding for this team and it's unbelievable, the training. And so I'm proud to, to have them here in our community and be, be able to share them with, with our community. And finally, just with some local statistics, in 2024, our officers were dispatched to 29,901 calls and 11,001 of those calls were classified as immediate, immediate police response was required, which signified that there was some type of danger to an individual or to the public. So that's, that was in 2024. Our violent crimes in 2024 in Lennox-Nattington, our calls were up 64 calls over 2023. During that period though, we did have a reduction in sexual assault occurrences. The extra, the numbers that 64 was predominantly increase in common assaults. And we see a lot of common assaults actually in our mental health calls and in our inter-partner violence, which we formerly referred to as domestic incidents. Our property crime, our total calls in 2024 were 978. That was down over 2023. The greatest reduction was our thefts and frauds. And we're happy to see the reduction in frauds because we have put a fair bit of work towards that. The efforts to mitigate the number of frauds that we're seeing in those vulnerable groups. Our impaired driving charges were up in 2024. And I could tell you this year in 2025, we still have an issue in our community with impaired driving. We have a lot of proactive efforts underway. Again, our collaborative efforts with that alliance team. But it's just something we just can't seem to shake. We, it's still pretty prolific within our communities and it's not just in this area here. It's something that we're talking about regularly across our region with all detachments. Our staffing this past, well, in the coming year, this year we were notified that we're getting enhancement of four more officers. So this is in addition to our existing complement. These officers will be deployed to the front lines. We have four platoons working, so it'll be one extra officer per shift, which is great. This is always good news because when I look as your detachment commander and I look at this loyalist area in our Odessa detachment and our efforts to upstaff that detachment. And have a good footprint here, uh, these additional bodies just help in those efforts. And we will be increasing our crime unit complement by one member also. So in twenty twenty five, we'll continue to inform our detachment board about our work. During our recent board meetings, uh, we've brought in our first meeting, we brought in our community street crime unit. Uh, which is a team who is housed out of the Napanee office, um, but they are, um, a group of five individuals, uh, who work. Plainclothes and their primary focus is on street level drugs, thefts, property crimes. Over the past year, we've had some great success with this team and the work that they've done within this community here in Loyalist Township in particular. And some of that is through, um, uh, just. Efforts of our own community, uh, members who are bringing information forward and we were able to share that and work with that information. And, uh, we were met with some successes, uh, in order to make our community safer. This past detachment board meeting, we brought in our community engagement officer, Constable Martin Curran, who's doing a fantastic job. He's been in position for about a half a year now and he's, he works closely, he's really our liaison with our mobile crisis response team. So we had, uh, Martin in and one of our MCERT workers, uh, to speak to the detachment board also and, and talk about the work that is being done. And again, it's another piece of what we as police are doing for our community, isn't really recognized necessarily, both our street crime unit, our people in our community don't see them. And then the work that our MCERT is doing in that, uh, uh, collaboration between social services and, and police. Is, is alive and well. And as I said, we've just gone from two to three and I can only see it growing even further and as, uh, as the years. Move along, uh, we are down in our mental health calls this year. Last year we had three hundred and thirty eight calls year to date, we're at three hundred right now. So we are down a bit, uh, but still three hundred calls with regards to mental health. And when we didn't at one time have that social services available and it was police responding, who weren't trained to deal with providing the assistance to these people. That's in place now and when we have three hundred, um, it's a significant, uh, um, partnership that we have. So your worship, that's all I really have for the report. I'm very happy to answer any questions, uh, between the staff and myself of, of this report or anything else you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for the report too, the information. Counsel, any questions or anything you'd like to share? Counselor Prodigy.
Through your worship, thank you for the report. The first thing I see is the huge map of Lennington Addington, which sort of is. I think historically, everybody looks at, go, wow, you know, there's only so, so many bodies to patrol. But I just, a couple of things that I'm interested in, uh, the bicycle footpaths and the CCTV technology. So was that a? Was that a, I guess, I don't want to say directive, but was that brought on by the OPP or was that more of a municipal, we want to do this and you know? How you got to that point, I guess.
Thank you through your worship. Um, well, the, the CCTV actually was, uh. Was through conversation with myself. So I've been a former, uh, operations manager of Quinney West, where they've got a great, uh, closed circuit television system. And I saw the benefits and, and how it had helped solve a lot of crime and it saves a lot of resource time, a lot of police investigation time. And, uh, so when I was told that they were going to be, uh, taking down some of that. Uh, technology and, and the infrastructure in downtown Napanee, I asked them to pause because I just know the value in it. And if we only had a few cameras, a few cameras better than no cameras. And it wasn't, uh, too much longer that a grant opportunity came through and it was specific for municipalities. And often these public safety grants that, uh, come through are only intended for police services who have a police service board. Or in the case of the OPP, a detachment board, and we didn't have that in place in this community. So a lot of those grants passed by desk and we can't act on. This was a unique grant though, where one OPP detachment in East Region would be supported. To work with the community to invest some, in some way to improve public safety. So I thought of the CCTV network and I approached Greater Napanee and said, we have an opportunity here. But Greater Napanee would have to come in kind with a certain contribution towards this system. So we worked together and we put this grant through and that's how we got the funding for it in order to, uh, put that. And again, the successes, uh, have been great. It's a, it's a Greater Napanee product, uh, we're a user. And, uh, so I hope Counselor that maybe answers the question of how that came about. I know it's something that we've, we've talked with our other communities about and kind of shared the successes. And I think, I actually don't want to speak too much for other communities, but I know some communities are, are very interested in it and wondering what it would be like to partner. Again, it's not our network, uh, it's, it's Greater Napanee's, but, uh, it has saved a significant amount of police resource time. In, uh, in, in solving some crimes. For example, we had the fire at the, at the, in Napanee. And that was before we had this up and running and we had three hundred places we had to canvas, uh, to see if anyone saw anything. See if they had any video technology, doorbell cameras and that sort of thing. And with things like the CCTV, things like CamSafe, which I've, which I promoted before this council and I, I continue to report, uh, or promote to other, uh, municipalities. It, through the use of both those technologies, we save a substantial amount of, uh, police resource time. And I'm sorry, Counselor, the second. Yes, the bicycles, I'm going to turn that over to Staff Sergeant O'Byrne to speak to the bicycle piece.
Uh, through your worship, Mr. Counselor, uh, this summer we took on two initiatives, uh, one was a foot patrol program and the bicycle program. So we have seven officers that are trained in bicycles and we deployed them across, uh, kind of our, through the desert realm, right down to the Loyalist area. We did use the bikes, uh, not as much as we did last summer. We primarily focused on foot patrol this summer, but we did absolutely use the bicycles. We have, like I say, seven officers that are deployed. And we find those, um, they're good for community outreach. We use them with a lot of the parade programs, um, and we have good success with it. Did you have a specific question about the bike program or?
Not really. I was just more interested and I don't recall seeing them in Loyalist, but. They would be just, I'm out at all strange hours.
No, we, we try to use them through the day. They're more of a visibility approach and, and they're much, uh, they're much better than the cruiser. I find them there, they're easier to approach and speak to officers, but absolutely they were deployed across our, we did focus more on foot patrol this, this summer though.
Yes.
Two, two little quick ones, um, and I might've missed this, so if I did, I apologize, but four oh one calls, do you specifically do that or do you have a special unit that does that?
Um, I mean, the, the, the. We do have a team, the provincial team that, uh, is, again, the other half is out of Quinney West and. Ability is the one, uh, that we do still have a presence on the four oh one, um, we're often being. Presence out there, uh. We have retention in this area if you, people. People go. I know you never speed through that area and. Enough, uh, like a crash, the impact. Out in our communities through the, uh. Those, the, the. And take a significant impact, so we. We. And the impact. Anything that may happen on our highways and you know, knock on wood, we've been, we've been, there has not, uh, there hasn't been those big crashes. Our highways are all collisions and. Moving. We need to, we need to. Which, which really, uh, the ones that are causing our fatalities.
Any other, Counselor Willis?
I have two questions if I may. Uh, you mentioned the CamSafe program and I'm just wondering, has there, have you been happy with the uptake on that? And is it continuing to be promoted in the community?
Thank you through your worship, uh. We were happy for a while and then it just kind of, um, died off a little bit. Loyalist, I think, has been one of the, we've got the best, uh. Registration success from the, from the efforts of Loyalist Township. We've really appreciated that. We have asked for a renewed emphasis on registering. And again, for those who aren't aware, CamSafe is, it's not a police, uh, program. It's one that the OPP, uh, fully supports. And it's just asking people if they have things like doorbell cameras or any other cameras in your houses, that you simply just register on CamSafe. I think it's camsafe.ca, but you'll find CamSafe. And you register and what it does then is it just allows, um, police to have a look and see who may have cameras and who's volunteered to just. Indicate that they have a camera. Um, it doesn't allow any access to CamSafe, what's, to your cameras at all. It just gives us an idea who may have video evidence. So if someone was going through cars or, or anything like that, um, and, and it's a deterrent too. When people know that there's a CamSafe program, it's like the neighborhood watch. And we're hoping that that's a deterrent and just keeps our community safe. But again, when we do need that video evidence, um, we quickly figure out where it is. And then we would reach out to those individuals and just ask them if they're willing to have a look and if they see anything to share it, uh, with us. So, um, we also have tomorrow, our community engagement officer, Martin Curran, is actually going to be on global news. And he'll be speaking specifically to the CamSafe. So that's one of our efforts to again, promote it within our communities. But we ask everybody to really jump on and help us promote this and build the program.
This is more of a twenty twenty five question, but after February, we saw an enhanced presence at the border. And, and it was OPP and other agencies. Is that continuing and is that being funded with help from the federal government? Or is that something that we're going to be paying for in the future?
It's a good question because. Sure. It, it is, it is being funded. Eventually, it's a provincial program, we're supporting the federal government. And, uh, we have had officers, uh, who support, who've been supporting that. So region, for example, is being, um, driven there. Our emergency response team, uh, which is again, a provincial program, they're primarily responsible for providing that extra, uh, level of. Patrol along our border points, includes, uh, spot checks at various airports, um, points. We did have a period where we had overtime officers, uh, to work at, again, all funded provincially, not from the municipalities. And, uh, but they put pressure on us because, um, our officers are obviously working a lot of time there. And then when we did have the occasion where we need them to work some overtime for us, they were just, they were tired, they were already, uh, they'd already put a lot of time in. So that has actually been clawed back to, the program, um, is primarily being managed by our emergency response team. And still it includes aerial surveillance, uh, uh, surveillance, vehicle surveillance of areas and spot checked. So it is something that the OPP is continuing to do, um, but it's less the pressure in our communities and it's not a cost to our communities.
Other members of council, any questions or comments? Saying none. Like to thank you for being here this evening, providing all the information, answering our questions. And as a, a board member, um, it's impressive with the, uh. The experience, although some of them are fairly new, but it, as you were mentioning, but just the expertise within the detachment is at a high level. And it's well used throughout the, the detachment, I think. And I, I'd go be remiss not to mention again, the support to the community, whether it's, um. Officers that are on their daily, their regular, um, duties or if it's the auxiliary, supporting our events. They're always there, they're always visible and it's very appreciated by everyone that attends the events. And, uh, including, I'm looking forward to the golden helmets and, uh, being able to see that for the first time. So that's going to be a great, uh, great event too. And the CamSafe, I'm glad you brought that up. I had made a note to bring that up. That there is a little bit of a renewed, uh, push on it again. And the township is, uh, actually later this week, we're going to be, uh, raising it again in the media to try to. Encourage more to share the information that they already have to help out. So that's great. So thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate it. And with that, counsel, we do have a recommendation. Would someone like to make the motion? Deputy Mayor Tanner.
I would move that the presentation from Inspector David Tobel and Sergeant Al O'Byrne, uh, regarding the twenty twenty four OPP detachment board annual report be received with thanks.
So moved, seconded by Counselor Budrick. Any comments from the mover, the second or other members? Called question, I'm in favor. Motion is passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, your worship.
Okay, so the next is open forum and I will just go straight to the, um. Virtual audience, I guess, um, I'll still do the preamble. Fifteen minutes of the meeting has been set aside for the open forum. Any individual may address council regarding an item on the agenda, excluding matters under the statutory public meeting section on the same agenda. Each person has three minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to speak can register in advance, which we did not have anyone do with the clerks division or raise, use the raised hand feature. In Zoom and we can bring you into the meeting. So I would just ask in the virtual audience, if there's anyone that wishes to speak this evening under open forum, to please use the raised hand feature so you can be brought into the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes open forum and now delegations. We do have one delegation this evening, uh, Crystal Ross. And I believe she's signing in virtually.
Krista, if you could hear us, can you turn on your video and unmute yourself? There we go.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We can hear you and see you, so if you're ready, then you can proceed with your delegation.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Um, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, my name is Crystal Ross and I'm a resident of Amherstview. Um, and I just wish to address the residential tax burden in our community. Um, an issue that affects families, seniors and young homeowners alike. So, um, in twenty twenty five, the township adopted a five point zero three percent increase in the residential tax rate. So that's approximately a hundred and seventy dollars per year for the average home. Um, and this follows several, this follows several years of consistent increases, uh, with no offset from commercial or industrial growth in our immediate area. Residents in Amherstview are now paying between five thousand and six thousand dollars or more per year. Um, and property taxes, which is among the highest effective rates in the region, especially when compared to services received. So while municipal services like waste collection, snow clearing, parks maintenance are essential. This increase still means a growing strain on our residents' budgets. It's especially concerning when household income isn't rising fast enough to. Uh, it's especially concerning when household income isn't rising fast enough to match the escalating costs of living. So unlike other communities in Loyalist Township such as Bath or Odessa, Amherstview lacks a developed commercial or industrial sector at the moment. Which means that our property taxes go directly towards services and infrastructure that would typically be offset by higher paying commercial tax classes, um, as they do in, in other areas. Um, so while we have planned commercial development in Amherstview, like the Amherstview S secondary plan, those projects are still far off in the future. So in the meantime, Amherstview remains a residential community where residents are funding both the current operations and the future growth of the community. So why now? Why am I putting forth this proposal now? So property taxes are a significant expense, especially for seniors on fixed incomes and families navigating other increases like essentials and groceries, utilities and mortgages. So while we appreciate investments in the WJ Henderson Recreation Center renewal and playground upgrades and rural road reconstruction, um, it has residents asking whether the high cost is yielding the proportional benefits. So Amherstview being adjacent to Kingston is yet primarily residential. Um, it may be disproportionately shouldering some of the tax responsibilities compared to areas with more commercial or industrial assessment basis. So tonight I'm asking for council to consider completing a review of residential tax rates, um, as well as the supporting tax assessment processes. So this request is not about cutting services or undermining the budget. It's about equity. Um, it's about recognizing that Amherstview residents are paying maybe more than their fair share due to an outdated taxation framework and a lack of commercial growth in our immediate community. I respectfully request the council to consider the following steps. The first being a commission, a commission of an independent budget review or an audit. So this should identify potential, potential cost efficiencies in both operational and capital budgets. Hopefully without compromising essential services. Um, the second being exploring tax burden redistribution strategies. So including shifting more of the tax load onto commercial or industrial property assessments, expediting commercial zoning and permitting, introducing a tax class relief or deferral program, or phasing capital projects over time to reduce sudden spikes in property taxes. Uh, number three would be ensuring regional equity and capital investment. So tracking spending per award and using equity scoring on major projects. Number four would be consider a temporary tax increase cap for Amherstview. So given the current economic pressures many households are facing, uh, maybe a freeze or a cap. Um, even a short term, uh, could provide some much needed relief for long-term strategies developed for the area. And lastly, advocate for the province to modernize the NPAC property assessment system, which is still frozen at 2016 levels and does not reflect the current economic climate. So in closing, Amherstview is growing quickly. Our residents love this community, but many are feeling the financial pressure. A temporary tax relief measure paired with forward-looking structural reforms would go a long way towards restoring fairness and protecting affordability for the community. By reviewing and possibly adjusting our tax framework, council can ensure that affordability and fairness remain core to our community's character and continued growth. Thank you for your attention, your leadership and your commitment to serving the res-